Recorded.
Okay, uh, hello, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session. Today is Thursday, August twenty first, two thousand twenty five. The time is six ten P. M. We had a late start because if a URL malfunction, a user error on my part. Um, anyway, this is Amanda Podmore Chair. Let's start with a roll call of commissioners.
Marsha Hayden Pope.
Malia Collins.
Brian Rodney.
Gary Cause.
Thank you. Um, thanks, Craig, for being here. Anybody in the audience, just welcome if you're there. Um, great. Okay, for our work session today, we have a couple of things in the agenda. First, we'll go over any updates with Soul Smart and the Renewable Energy Ordinance, then the General Plan Update. And then we have a draft Airport Zone Ordinance to review from Hanson Group so that that can either be passed on to Town Council or um, could go to our next meeting for a recommendation. So does that agenda sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay, we'll start with item one, Soul Smart Update.
Want to go, Brian?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so we um, had submitted the application, got it rolling with Sarah, then we set up a meeting and we were gonna review the initial draft and their review of our ordinance. And then we were gonna have a meeting and then they had an emergency and we were not able to meet with them. So we are still sort of in uh, waiting. Period. So, yeah, so I think the one thing, I was looking at my calendar, uh, and I was hoping to meet with them on the second of September unless it felt like it needed to be the week before of the proposed meeting days, Marsha. I don't know.
Well, I guess taking it from there, my thought would be since this is a work session, I think we should bring up the, the um, draft that we're using. And I think we should clean up one or two things that we know we might want to clean up so that when they look at it and we're together, that maybe we have a little bit more done. But that's, you know, I hope, I don't know if some of you got to look at it. I know this last week was crazy for people. They were in and out of town. So I'm not sure if anybody really did. I was thinking of one or two things like um, Malia um, looking at the chart and we could take off a couple of things we don't need on the chart. And then a question I have about the size definitions, the level zero, one, two, three, four. So if we want to spend a few minutes during our work session doing that together, we're, we're sort of looking at a couple of items on our agenda together here, Soul Smart and the, and the ordinance. I think we might be able to get a couple of things done amongst ourselves. But Brian's right, we're still waiting for the input from Soul Smart, which got backed up on us.
And it, it's not like a permanent emergency, like funding cut or?
No, that I saw on the other one that Malia was dealing with that company or that, that proposal. Um, we believe that this particular one, Sarah said the words family emergency, meaning she was unavailable. However, in the big scheme of things, a lot of solar things are being pulled out from under, you know, solar jobs are being pulled out from under people. So at the moment, I think we continue on with some of the ideas that we were given and then be ready that Brian and I or whoever makes this meeting work, that we um, gets more done with them.
So, yeah, I think sense to do some work on that today.
If someone can bring it up, there goes Malia with the screen, screen sharing. Um.
So and just for the record, we'll move on to item two, which is the Renewable Energy Ordinance.
Sorry, sorry, I knew, I don't have my agenda in front of me because I don't have a printer here in Durango, so I usually sit with it and make notes. Um, so my thought was just doing a couple of basic corrections, like just even the wording, this ordinance shall be known as the Renewable Energy Project Ordinance. And I don't know that we need the word project.
Agreed.
Just wondering. Okay, so there are just a couple of simple things. And the purpose looks good. You can match it up to the purpose as listed in some of their suggestions. But I think we're pretty close because it's a general purpose of allowing for renewable energy where we are. So I think we're good there. The definitions, I think, is where we had a few things to do and will still need some input from them. But if you go a little bit further, they, we were talking about um, levels and Malia, I think you and I mentioned those with Sarah in the initial talk we had with her. Did you recall, as I did, that there, there were probably too many breakdowns in this? That the smaller one could be something like, you know, zero to five acres or something? And then did, does that sound correct?
I think so. Yeah, I think that she was saying pretty much anything that's under, was it five acres?
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
A residential project.
Well, here's.
Our level zero and level one might be basically the same two columns.
Right, that we don't need it.
Yeah.
And part of that would, would help us when we go to chart these because we won't have so many to chart. So here's, here's my thought. What we need to do is look at that compared to one of their sample ones and use the sizes that they use in their samples. Does that sound right? So maybe.
Wait and see what they, what their recommendations are.
Okay, okay, but I do, I do think Malia and I did sort of address that with her a little bit as being, we have a few too many and that would be good to help. Um, so, good. Um, let's see. Um, and Brian jump in, if you remember, I think what happened was Malia and I talked to her and then Brian jumped in to take out, take off some of the burden from Malia and we haven't been able to talk with.
Yeah, we haven't actually connected yet.
So we've just been generally introducing ourselves as opposed to getting anything done. Um, let's see, renewable energy, solar wind and geothermal, and then I just wrote the words and future considerations of power. The only reason I, I maybe it's the words means renewable energy means solar wind means not limited to just solar wind and geothermal or something like that. Just to incorporate the big new thing that happens next week or something.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't quite know how to say that. Um. Uh, yeah, I mean, and so that was one. Then the other things, um, yeah, this is where we get to the levels, meaning the size and this I recall, and I think Brian, we said it too, and that was that it is not the power generated that makes you do your charts. It's the um, how did she put it? It's the size of the, go ahead, White.
Is it the density?
It's the um, how did?
The number of panels?
No, because she was saying that you um, darn, I'm sorry, guys. I thought I was a little better prepared, but now that I'm looking at the chart, I'm not thinking well.
You're good.
Um, the idea is that you want to make sure that there's ways to use these power generating in all the different zones with the capacity and you don't want to limit it to just the size of the lot, you know, or the size of the project kind of thing. And so most of what we have on here is correct. Permitted versus, versus um, the conditional use. So we're very close here. We just have to get our sizes right for, for allowing it. And I'm not saying this very clearly, but that's something that I hope we can work on with Sarah.
Yeah. Was there something you wanted me to do to this table at this time?
Oh, not this particular table, I think, because once we address those sizes, it will be better. So it, yeah, it was these study things where those could be put into conditional use of, as opposed to being a part of a chart, I think it is to be able to say if there's a conditional use because of where you happen to be putting it. Um, that's when you are required because most of these studies are done to make sure it fits where it's going anyway. Is, is kind of how I, is Malia, is that kind of how you remember her?
Yeah.
I think it's been too long.
Didn't she say?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Amanda.
I'm sorry. I think I, I'm like lagging some, sorry.
No.
Um, didn't she say no glare study?
Yeah, that, that they don't do these studies, okay? There's, it's all part of putting together the package from the pro, the proposer. The, the energy company is gonna bring you all this stuff done, okay? And they're gonna say, you know, this fits on this property and it doesn't cause the glare of this or that. And the only times that might be an issue is because of particular site that they're going to put it on. And then we can say conditional use is you're building next to a and, and we obviously won't have quite that many hap, this won't happen to us much because we're not saying, oh, you're putting that next to a skyscraper. Your wind, you know, your wind is going to affect that. So we won't run into this very much. And therefore, we could just say conditional use could include, conditional um, use permits could include specific studies as warranted by the site. You know, and, and make it part of the conditional use sentence. That's, that's kind of where, so that, that helps our charting sort of come down to reality, I think, too. Um, because there are charts in a couple of those samples and they didn't have quite as, you know, quite this many things. They had size and whatever. By the way, CBS News, just as I walked in here, did their report on the sheep farming in Texas that's now being done out of, under all the solar panels. So it was, it was a good story. It was.
Should we go ahead and delete that column then?
I, I think we should delete. Yeah, I think we can delete that. The three, the three columns, I think, you, yeah, you can say um, somewhere in our conditional use list, we might want to be able to say may require specific studies that, site-specific studies. Um, you know, if it hits something. For example, I put that question on my airport list of questions. If we say yes to a solar farm, does that impact um, airport glare study stuff? So in other words, there's a perfect example of, hey, wait a minute, we might have to look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so that was one. I think this size stuff is going to be key to this. And I don't get it yet, obviously. So hopefully, when Brian and I are talking with her or whoever works on this, we'll get that to be, this is why the size is required to do this. Okay. There we go. Um, let's see, did I write any more notes to me? Are you um? This uh.
Now here's where they have the.
Right, here's where we put it initially and um, yeah, I mean, some kind of statement that says um, may be added by Planning and Zoning Commission or something, you know, I'm not quite sure. We, I think we just leave it yellow for now and try and get some help with that. Is that cool?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Okay. Seeding, seeding, that's, you know, grazing all the sheep under the mist. This place had a million panels, a million plans. Um, I don't think we're gonna get a million.
Uh. I, um, I have a comment on the exemptions. I think we should put the definition for residential solar lights. I just looked it up and then we could just say residential solar lights or whatever are exempt.
Oh, that's a good way to do it. Yeah.
So let me, um, here, I'll, I'll put it in the definitions section. We could all look at it.
Residential solar lighting is exempt. Lighting, meaning it could be on your walkway or it could be on your, I don't know, just lighting in general or is it, lights is fine too.
Yeah.
Um.
Gonna go back up the definitions and see?
Yeah, I wrote.
It is.
Residential solar is self-contained lighting fixtures that harness sunlight to provide illumination for homes and surrounding outdoor space. Um.
And so what we're trying to address here are those like garden lights and just the small scale. Their way to see it a little bit more specifically because I feel like that could easily be misunderstood as I'm putting solar panels on my roof and it's for my house.
Yeah.
And so it's residential solar.
Yep, I agree. That's a little. How about residential solar lights? In other words, you're speaking specifically of little lights, not lighting as a plan, lights.
Like solar powered lights, residential solar powered lights.
Oh, that's good, too.
Yeah.
Often referred to as the.
Yeah. Solar powered lights are self-contained lighting fixtures that harness sunlight to provide illumination for homes and surrounding outdoor spaces. I like that.
Yeah.
It's a little more specific.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, garden lights, we all want to have available, available to us.
I had a meeting with Solar for All, even though they no longer exist. Funding. It was soon after they lost their funding. But anyways, they were telling me about there are types of balcony solar panels that you can basically like hang from a balcony and that's how they got their name. And you plug it into your one hundred and twenty volt outlet and it will power your breaker. It also powers a battery and it's something that you can basically usurp your electric bill. If that's the right way to use that word. So something else that's out there. And I mean, it's been really popular in Europe for rental properties because you can't necessarily put a solar panel on top of your apartment complex, but this is one way for you to actually have solar power, solar power in your own location. And have it, the battery backup when you need it.
Wow.
Emergency.
See, I told you we have to say, and everything yet to come. It's all coming.
And, oh, and crazy thing, Utah is the only state in the U. S. That is currently legal in. And it was passed this year. Isn't that surprising?
Are we, wait, wait, we're, we're ahead of the curve, if that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Okay, does anyone else see anything, Brian? Or what did you, did you circle anything to come back?
Sorry, no, I'm convulsing over here. I'm not very useful.
Um, okay, so maybe we're at a good place to say, hey, guys, at, at solar company, would you please, you know, help us through some of these questions, which primarily are like size and location properly put in there? Um, if in fact Brian comes out, comes out of this somewhat sooner and then he and I can talk some morning when he's off work and just go through our list of questions like size and placement and stuff so that when we talk to them, we can get a good hand, better handle on that.
Sounds great. I'll be off. I'm actually off work all next week. We're gonna be tooling around Colorado, but we could do a Zoom meeting because we probably do that anyway, right? Because you're in.
Yeah, I'm, it's definitely, I'm in Durango during the week, so.
Cool.
Whatever, just, just, I have no schedule as.
Yeah.
So.
Does the second work for the meeting for you? Because I, I have a drafted email. I just wanted to make sure.
Um, I don't have my, yeah, just go for it. Oh, the second is, is, uh, so the first is Labor Day, second is Tuesday, and that just means I'm just, um, yeah, it's, Vaughn, Vaughn is actually to the point now that he's driven himself to his appointments the few days, so that just means I'm available from the time I wake up instead.
That's perfect. I'll send back that email to Sarah today then.
Okay, I'll watch for it. Good. Okay, guys, I think that's what we can do on the energy one. Amanda, you can um, unless anyone else has questions.
No, that's nice. Nice to keep doing a little bit of progress. So thanks, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Um, okay, well, let's move to item four under new business on the agenda, which is, um, oh, no, sorry, item three, we're still on old business, the General Plan Update. Um, so I have been doing a little bit more work, just updating the text in the general plan. But I need to connect with Erin, so I have an email out to her to, hopefully, we can get together next week and just see where things are at. I'm not sure if she's gotten ahold of folks to help with the map uh, portion, so. But we're just, yeah, we're making progress. Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have a deadline, Amanda? Tell me the timing on this. Wasn't it for December or something?
Yeah, I don't have my document with the dates in front of me, but it's um, we have a public hearing.
October twenty eighth.
What was it?
I think it's October twenty eighth.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah.
So, um, which kind of means we have to have the ordinance, the draft ordinance ready or the draft general plan and any other ordinance is like two weeks before, so. Um. I can send out those dates again. But, yeah. Anything else on general plan? Sorry, I don't have much more to share, but.
Don't think so. Sounds great.
Cool. Okay, so then new business, item four is the Airport Zone Ordinance from Hanson Group. So um, I emailed that out to everybody this week, uh, and as a reminder, that was something that they, we contracted with Hanson Group to do for us as required by law. And um, this is a zoning issue and so I think it should come before us first and I think we should vote um, whether or not we recommend it to Town Council. Um, so I think maybe today we can discuss any questions we have. Um, the Hanson Group has offered to present to us if needed. Um. So we, we could discuss that today. I mean, they might also want to present to Town Council, so I'm not quite sure what's, maybe that would be a joint session that they present to. Um. But I'm assuming this ordinance would probably be lumped into that public hearing October twenty eighth, so I don't think there's a huge rush on this. Um, so that, all that to say, like, if we put it on our agenda for September fourth, it could still then go to Town Council after and anyway, let's, let's discuss what questions and thoughts we have and see if we need to have a presentation from the Hanson Group before we uh, would vote on it at a, at a future meeting.
So they sent us this summary presentation and I looked through it earlier today and it's four whole slides.
Yeah.
So really nice, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the summary is like, they're recommending that five thousand foot buffer around the airport and then the abogation easement, which it sounds like our building height restriction is already aligned with that. Marsha had a quick comment in there about should we have like a, you know, a kind of a scaling up of like the closer you are to the airport, the lower the roof, roof height, but it sounds like from their recommendation, we might already be fine, but.
Oh, cool.
Would it also be covered under the law? They reference the aviation laws for any development projects around the airport. I just wonder if the general federal aviation laws cover that.
N- not necessarily. I think that's the whole point of having the local ordinances because then you're saying, we're not, see, we're not covered by FAA, um, aren't we just a strip instead of an airport, isn't?
I just thought that in their ordinance, they referenced that later on. They referenced it in their writing.
Oh.
I just didn't know if that ordinance, you know, that reference covered sort of, I don't know anything about FAA. But just in terms of like the, the size of the buildings as, as they relate to the location of the landing strip.
Right, so what, the only reason I put my note in there is because I remember doing this many years ago for the county. It was never adopted, but it was done in such a way that said you can build one story uh, little hangars near the airport. You can build two stories out from the airport, whatever, so that there were actual designations. According to this wonderful document, because it's so simple and, and obvious, they don't say that, although he does mention you could. So all I'm asking is, are we supposed to or are we good with the thirty-five feet and go from there? That's, I just wanted clarification from them on that.
Maybe we could, and then we could probably get email clarification from that, from them on that.
Yeah, if we only come up with a couple of questions, we could just email them and not have to have them come, because this document is so nicely done and explained and straightforward. And if all we had is a question or two, because I had that question in and I had one more, but I can't remember. Um. Oh, yeah, on my notes was the solar question. If in fact this talks anything about um, energy development in the zone. And the energy development question would be when we did the windmills outside of Monticello, you know, it's right next to that airport up there. And of course, they had to have the red lights and they have to have whatever. So does this airport overlay zone need to say energy development must, whatever, must be safe for aviation? So those are my two questions. Buildings out and energy development.
Okay.
Good questions. Thanks for thinking that through, Marsha.
How about we, oh, sorry, do folks have other questions too for the Hanson Group?
I don't think so. I think it was pretty well written. I know that there, there was the option for the five thousand feet, but I think, Marsha, you've already mentioned that if that's something we'd want to go broader for how much of the land it actually covers.
It's a lot of land. If you go to that map, it was a nice big circle around it.
Yeah.
Now, and, and don't forget, we're surrounded by land that isn't developable, blah, 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 blah. The river corridors and the
Right.
Comridge and the canyons and stuff, so.
Yeah.
We're talking a very low-use airport, so.
Right.
Also, I don't, doesn't, I, what I was referring to before though, Marsha, was that fourteen CFR part seventy-seven, and when you open that up, all is that, that it has tons of standards for obstruction standards, height standards of any new construction or alteration of buildings. I'm not saying that we don't need to have those heights. I'm saying they included basically airport, they included those standards into our overlay zone.
So there you go, that.
There's like hundreds of, hundreds of points. I can't, this is like a huge document with all of that stuff written into it. So it sounds like another one of those things like the solar where if someone was approaching us with a project, he's put in the, they put in that coverage. That it has to, it may, has to meet all of the standards. So before even coming here, someone's already gonna have to do that.
Perfect.
Yeah, so I don't think they ever even thought that through.
Brian, that's good. That's, that does answer the question better than I, so for all the thinking I did, I missed the answer.
No, no, not, I mean, try to read this document and tell me if you could, there's a lot of FAA words in this document.
My, my nephew is the Delta pilot. I'll call him and ask.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll, I'll ask him what we're doing. But no, that's, that's exactly right, Brian. If, if, if it says right there, which it does, that you're going to meet any federal, you know, requirements, then we're done. That answers that.
Yeah, and then, sorry.
No, no, that's good. It still leaves the energy question, meaning
Right.
are there are there requirements for energy? Brian, do you see anything that says solar, wind or anything in that, or is it just talking about buildings?
Oh, it's talking about all sorts of things. I'm gonna search it and see if there's anything that speaks about those sorts of things.
I feel like with that fourteen CFR part seventy-seven, anything else we put in this overlay zone ordinance that we're creating is just more specific. So if we want to become more restrictive or more specific, that's, that's what we're spelling out here.
I guess my only thing on any of. I guess my only thing on any of this is my usual argument or discussion point, which is planning, meaning we're planning for what could happen.
Right.
Because, you know, we sit here and go, ah, it's never going to happen in bluff. And how many times have we said that about something? And along comes someone asking. So I'm just saying, if the guy comes and says, hey, there's some open land, here's some solar or windmill or something, which you know, and it won't happen now because of course there's no money being spent on that right now, no, no subsidies or anything. Anyway, bottom line is, as long as we're covered by somebody's rules, which in this case fourteen CFR part seventy seven could be those rules, then we're good.
Yeah, I mean, it even has, I think what a direct reference, what you're talking about too, is that you can't have, they have a defined slope in a horizontal distance from the landing strip that you can't build in. So it has, everything has to be tapered away from the like you saying, I can't find anything about solar energy in here, though.
Okay, so energy might be.
That's a good idea to look at.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Good one.
How about I I email him Jacob and see if we can get answers to those and then we he doesn't have to present to us. Uh, but if if it's like complicated, then we can invite him to that meeting on November fourth.
That sounds perfect.
Okay. Nice. Yeah, this is a beautiful ordinance. I'm like it it's it's just appreciate it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially when someone else does it.
Right.
Yes.
Just kidding.
Why they get the big bucks?
Yeah, exactly.
Wonderful. Okay, are we good to wrap up item four then? Airport zone ordinance?
Thank you, Hanson Group.
Okay, item five is items for next agenda. Kind of the same agenda with the LUC and.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, we can talk about that under other for a second after you do the list.
Yeah, any other, so the next agenda will have renewable energy ordinance, air port zone overlay ordinance and land use clearance.
And general plan.
General plan. And we'll have the building department update.
Perfect.
Okay, great. So item five, other, Marcia?
Yeah, I just, I I have a question, comment, discussion moment here, and I kind of raised it with Amanda a little bit, and I wasn't quite sure. If we get an LUC sent to us, the proposal for this um, for if we get an LUC sent to us to be put onto agenda coming up, we all kind of look it over. Are we? Is it, would it be okay to do at the work session? If it happens timely wise to say, hey, guys, did you see that they didn't put how high the building was on there or something like that where we all notice it? And then let the person know for the meeting on which they will present? Or is it just let us look through our emails as we have been doing to this point? And just say the same thing, hey, Amanda, I don't see the building height on this. Do you want to let them know? So my just general discussion was, do we, if we have something in our hands during a work session, do we want to look it over? Or do we just continue checking through our emails?
Yeah, I think both sounds good. Just making sure that we're adhering to the Open Public Meetings Act, that if we are responding via email, that it is not, we're not hitting reply all, that we are just replying to Amanda or just to one person. Because by replying all, it is a a breach of that open media, Open Public Meetings Act.
Well, but but hang on, what I'm trying to get to then is if I don't see the building height. Well, I I mean, I didn't catch fourteen CFR seventy seven just now as as well as I should have. So did I miss the building height on an LUC and I send that out? And everybody goes, no, it's there already. In other words, someone does need to answer, and we do, in fact, send it out to all of us. That's how we communicate. So we're not making decisions on our emails. We're communicating on our emails. So I'm not quite sure. I I know what you're saying, Malia. We don't want to sit there going, oh, I hate this project and I'm never going to let them do this. You cannot do any of that. But are we in fact able to do figure out a way to make sure that what we're missing? I I don't know. I I can see Amanda's wheels are spinning because she does this all the time. So maybe she's just got a perfect answer.
I what I all I will share the concern I brought up with Marcia was that I don't, if if somebody applies for land use clearance, I didn't want to make them have to come to two meetings, one, the work session, and then two, the regular meeting where we can make a decision on rec on approving it or not. And so that was my hesitation in having it be a work session. We also don't allow the public to comment in a work session. So even if the person was at the work session, they wouldn't be like participating, so. Um, I'm I'm open to to, I think, I think in the past, we have not had land use clearances on work sessions. I'm open to changing that, but I think it sends a weird signal to the, um, proponent if we're like, you can't, you don't need to come and you can't really engage in this. So.
Okay, okay. And I I totally agree with that. I do not want to make people come. I'm I'm sort of looking at it as just what we were just doing on our ordinances, we're doing on the LUC, we're going, hey, did anyone notice fourteen CFR section seventy seven? Because I didn't, or you know, we're just looking at it to say it as a group. But I agree, we we don't want the people there. We don't want to discuss it or vote on it. I'm just, but if we're doing okay through the emails, then we're just fine.
I wonder if we were just to keep it as an other, just bring it up under other as we as we see it and say, I was looking through the LUC, did you guys see that? Did you guys, did I miss this? So then it is still recorded part of the open public meeting. And we can discuss it and then notify that person if we did find something, just as we would through email. Just not making it its own agenda item for a work session.
Right. Hmm. Well, maybe because we're just getting so few of them at a time, the emails are working just fine. Maybe that, maybe we stick to where we are until we have a problem. We haven't really had any problem. I just, but Malia, I do go to the point that says we are in fact saying reply all, we are saying. I mean, I I don't know, are we or should we? Because we're not deciding anything. We're saying, I don't see the building height. Could you please ask the applicant?
I thought we had something in there where they, uh, there was someone to review it really quick because we were limited on time.
And that, yeah.
We wanted it reviewed to get back to those people so that they could make those changes.
Agreed, Gary. It does say it will be reviewed, so you'll know if something's missing. And now we have another layer to that because sometimes it's, um, building department people too. But the LUC process is ours and we're not going to have those many more. Are we having LUCs anymore? I mean, this is that whole.
I think it's still undecided, is it? Or, yeah, we still have.
I mean, technically, the one that's coming up for September fourth is a good example of to me, why do we still have this? If and and maybe it's, it will be a good discussion this next time, where we help the the applicant get that taken care of. But then we use it for discussion to say, why did we need to see this? If you brought it, if someone brings a drawing of what they're doing and it fits what it's supposed to do, we don't need to be in the process if the building department is. So.
If the building department has seen this LUC?
Uh, I do not know that. Um, it came in through Aaron through the email. So like I said, this one seems like a really good example of one that I wasn't, I think I answered, please send us an LUC, you know, please. There's still a question of they should be sending it to someone to say, this is what I'm doing. And they did, in fact, talk to to KB first. They, the gentleman in question sent or called maybe or sent an email to KB and said, this is what I'm doing. Do I need, what do I need to do? And she called me and I said, well, I guess we'd have to see what it is. So is that an LUC to see what it is? But are we, you know, once he told her what it was, I'm not sure we really did. So I think we definitely take care of this one for this gentleman on the next agenda, because that's where we are. But I think we look at it because Gary's right. Someone needs to look at it to make sure what it is. But what's the next step?
Um, yeah. I do think we need to answer to the this fundamental question of in emails, can we use that as a system to say it looks like the LUC is missing a building height or whatever, um, that's not a decision, but, um, so I can try to get clarity on that.
Well, I think we've done it in the past. I mean, I know that you've sent an email or two saying, you know, hi, thanks so much for submitting. We didn't see what, uh, I think there was one with a bunch of setbacks that were left off or something like that, you know? So I I think that is reasonable. That's that's what Gary's referring to, and he's absolutely right, is to say here's my application and we look at it and say, hey, it's, you know, it's fine. It's a good application, but you forgot one or two things and get it ready because you're on the next agenda. And so that that's where we're supposed to do that. And and Gary, this may be the point where we have to discuss Erin, uh, Erin in the email, Kristen at the building department, planning and zoning, we're still kind of edging to what that is. We we shouldn't have to see, I think we talked about this, there's a lot we shouldn't have to see anymore with the building department. You know, if someone walks in and it meets all the criteria, then the building department okay's it, does what they need to do. So. You know. We don't have the answers. We just have lots of questions.
Everything.
Yes, yes.
Um, but yeah, I guess in the meantime, if if you are reviewing the LUC, I um, I need, I still need to review it. And if you notice something, you can email me and I can let the applicant know about a question, so.
Okay.
Does he email you individually? Or group?
I guess email me individually since we need clarity on that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I reviewed it and it's fine that I saw, but sure enough, there'll be a question or something and we just need to know. Okay. That was my other, so I'm done.
Cool.
Um, I also have another, the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference is October first and second in Salt Lake. Is anyone interested in attending?
I'd love to, but we're not done up here in Durin or down here in Durango, over here in.
I'm unavailable.
I have to check my calendar, but I would be if she was available. To check with the boss.
I do feel that's better.
I don't want to be available to my birthday. I'd rather not.
You don't, and it's from for my uh, opinion is chair, it's not, I don't think it's something that we need to attend on an annual basis. I did attend once, learned a few things. Um, but it was definitely geared to much larger towns. And so it wasn't, um, not every session was useful to me.
Yeah. And necessarily specific to planning and zoning. I know that last time I checked, they didn't have their um, description of all the courses yet. Looking at it right now. And see that their agenda. Workshops, that's the word. Sorry, my brain is not working today. Oh, nice. Well, there's some, none of the, yeah. Some of them have been announced, some of the workshops.
Okay.
So options.
Okay, maybe if you think of it, Malia, and you see it, you could email at us, email us when they have more posted or maybe, yeah.
Sounds good. If you do want to attend, um, reach out to Erin and Anne, I believe. And I'm not sure if it's some, I don't think it would require a vote, but just in case it does. Because I believe the town would pay. But I could be wrong, but I believe so.
Okay, any other items under other?
Um, so I Erin and I met yesterday with Dennis Shumway of the San Juan County Public Health. And we started talking about septics and all kinds of exciting things about septics. And he actually had some really good information and Septic Smart Week is September fifteenth through the nineteenth. And so I am going to be working on a education open meeting that people can come and learn more about their septic systems. And Dennis will be down to do, give a short presentation and, uh, also bring down some designers and other people that are septic related. Being in this meeting, I learned a lot already, so I'm excited for it and I'll keep you guys posted when it happens.
Cool. Thanks, Malia. All right, any other items under other? This is a, we've never had so many others. Nope. Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
My second, did you make it, Marcia, to Malia?
Oh, I did.
Then I'll second.
Option by Malia, second by Marcia. All right, meeting is adjourned at six fifty six P M tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Care.
Guys. Brian, hope you feel better.
Thank you, Craig.
Thanks, Craig. Good night, guys.
Bye.